Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone here tonight. Mrs. Byram, can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mrs. Quinter.
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a corps.
Thank you very much. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, Dr. Hornick, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Request one. I have two special recognitions to briefly do this evening. If you would entertain that, we would add it into the superintendent's report and recommendations part.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the adjustment to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I move that we accept agenda as amended.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Turn it over to you, Dr. Hornick.
Thank you very much, Ms. Page. Mr. Berry. All right, so ladies and gentlemen, the audience, this is Mr. Berry's last school board meeting of his distinguished career. Thirty-three years total in education, 21 here in Orange. And we did a little send-off for him on Friday with his family to express our gratitude, appreciation, to let him know how much each of us to an individual, including myself, first and foremost, for sure is going to miss you very much, Bill. And I wanted to take one more opportunity here this evening and invite the board, if you would like to come down. And we'd like to get a picture with you and present a small certificate on behalf of this body, Mr. Berry, for your acumen, your excellence, your perseverance, and your dedication to students, your time here in Orange. You will be forever missed. We very much appreciate you, good sir, and congratulations on retirement. For those of you who may not know, it is also School Board Appreciation Month here in February. And so these group of five dedicated individuals who were kind enough to bring me on board, and I appreciate each one of them tremendously and enjoy working with each one of them tremendously, spend a lot of time and dedicate a lot of effort to Orange County and to the students and the families in the community of Orange County. And we wanted to take a moment to recognize them for their contributions to Orange County. Thank you to each school board member. So thank you, Ms. Page and Madam Chair and members of the board for indulging us. And we are looking forward now to moving on. And we're going to start this evening with some presentation of some overnight and a few out-of-state field trip requests. And so I believe, Mr. Neely, is it you, Mr. Palmieri, who's coming forward? As well as, I know, Mr. Satterwhite is here as well. So we have one for the, we have two for the high school, if I remember correctly. One for the high school bands and choir and another for the FFA.
Academic team.
Academic team headed to Atlanta, Georgia. And then Mr. Satterwhite is here from Locust Grove Middle School for his SCA group. And so they are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Hornick, everybody in attendance. So we have two trip proposals on our agenda tonight. As Dr. Hornick mentioned, the first one is for our band and choir students to go to Orlando, Florida from Thursday, April 20th to Sunday, April the 23rd to compete in a competition that is going to be held on Disney World where we will be housed. And I would definitely be more than happy, along with Mr. Neely, to answer any questions that you might have pertaining to that trip. We could explain and everything that we've provided talks about how that trip is being funded. And again, making sure that we are minimizing any out-of-pocket costs for students. We have recently shorn up our bus travel there. And I believe that we have all our ducks in a row with that. And again, working closely with our Fine Arts Booster Board to make sure that all students that are going on that trip do not have to endure any out-of-pocket costs they cannot incur. They have been paying for this trip since October on a payment plan. And they have multiple fundraisers in place for students who require some scholarship assistance to get that so that no student who is slated to go on this trip would have to go on into any type of debt or eligibility in regards to not being able to have enough funding to go on that trip. I'll open it up if there's any questions to any aspects of that trip. And I would also like to add before I do that, that Mr. Neely and myself will be accompanying the band and choir on that trip to make sure that we are providing extra supervision while they are out of state for four days. So we will be there exclusively with the group from start to finish on the trip.
God bless you.
Now, it's four days. How many nights are you staying in Florida?
So they will depart, they're going via charter bus, so they are leaving Thursday from Orange. They expect to be there sometime Thursday night. So they'll be staying Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, and returning Sunday.
Okay.
Yes. Any other questions regarding the Disney trip? Okay, the next trip that we are looking to get approved tonight here is our academic team, which is an up-and-coming program on our campus, and they've done an amazing job under the direction of both Gia and Patrick Angotti. They've built their numbers and they've done amazing this year competing in the Jefferson District. They won a tournament this year that got them a qualifying bid to go to Atlanta. And that's kind of served as their credo all year. It's been academic team to Atlanta, it's been like their hashtag that they've kind of built. Everything they've worked for has been for this trip. Again, they have also done a really good job of fundraising to get this trip covered. A lot of the parents that are taking their students on this trip are going with them because it's an after-school-lets-out trip. It is in late May, so they are going to be accompanied by their parents. So again, there's going to be minimal cost for any kid who needs to go because we have been working with some donations and they have done some fundraising opportunities on our campus. And again, so that's another trip that I feel that has been very well planned out with, again, which will not put any student into debt or any type of, they cannot go due to funds because of the attempts by Mr. and Mrs. Angotti to make sure that all students had that opportunity to go. And that's the two requests from Orange County High School in regards to trips.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Typically, in the past, we have gone ahead and approved these.
We've got another one to hear from here.
Sorry, Todd.
The SCA at Locust Grove Middle School is planning to participate in the Virginia SCA Conference. The distance is not that great. It's at Massaphonics High School, but the activity begins on a Friday and it doesn't end until 10:00 or 10:30 Friday night. And it resumes early on Saturday morning. So that's the reason for making that into an overnight field trip. The SCA has conducted fundraisers throughout the year to cover all the costs of the trip. And we look forward to participating in that. One of our students, Amanti Lindsay, is the regional middle school representative, and he will actually be presenting at the convention on conducting middle school SCA programs. So it's a good opportunity for the students. We'll have a total of seven attending. Five are going to do the overnight part, and two, their families will be transporting them.
Awesome. All right.
Sounds good.
So like I said, I was going to say typically, you know, we've gone ahead the evening of and approved these. Did you guys feel comfortable with lumping this all together? Or do you want to single out each trip by itself?
I would move to approve the three overnight field trip requests as presented.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Next this evening, I believe Ms. Blair was not going to be able to be in attendance tonight. And so what we are seeking is, and I believe this is historic and do this each year, but to work in concert with other school divisions and proclaim March 6th through 10th as National School Breakfast Week in Orange County public schools.
Is everybody comfortable with going ahead and approving this as well?
I move to approve the resolution proclaiming March 6th through 10th, 2023, as National School Breakfast Week in Orange County public schools.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Ailer to come forward. And she is going to address some policy revisions that we have identified in the realm of student health, as well as being able to respond in kind to emergency situations at any time on campus.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Hornick. So the first policy is JHCD. This actually came before the board back in 2021, but there was some concern about the first paragraph that is actually taken out. What I'd like to point, though, is attached to the proposed policy, there's also regulations. And that verbiage is actually written into the regulations. So it's not removed from our policy manual. It just is written in the regulation versus in our policy. The next piece that we would like, we're looking to add, and this is based on state code, the Code of Virginia, is adding in a statement regarding albuterol inhalers. That was in-state code that each school should have stocked albuterol in their schools, in their school clinics. I will say proudly, Orange County, this is something that we had done historically since I've been here and prior to me, that we've always had stocked albuterol in our clinics available in emergency and crisis situations. Now it is, the Code of Virginia says we have to, but it is something that we've always done. So it's just adding that statement to this policy. Connected to the policy are the regulations. And the only addition to the regulations that we have is at the very bottom. In the policy, it states that the superintendent will develop regulations regarding administration of medications, but also safe disposal, and that was missing from the regulation. And so this was taken directly off Virginia Department of Education out of the handbook for medication administration in schools as their safe disposal of medications. Any questions regarding that policy or regulation? Okay. The second one is, in the state code, it does allow for school divisions to stock naloxone, which a lot of people know as Narcan, in their school clinics. It doesn't mandate that that happen, but it does allow for that to happen. And so we are proposing to add in our, the policy that deals with crisis, which is policy EB, to add a statement that each school will have contingency plans for emergencies that include certified staff for CPR, the Hummlich maneuver, emergency first aid, and the administration of naloxone. I will say this is a request from our school nurses as well to have this in our buildings. We do know that our school resource officers also carry naloxone with them. Currently, there's not one in every building, a school resource officer in every building all day long. They, right now, some of them are in multiple buildings. But with rising instances, particularly in schools and schools in our area, our nurses have asked if we could stock naloxone. I've talked with Kathy Hatter at Virginia Department of Health regarding policies, training, that type of thing. She will actually be the person who could come in and train whoever we designate in our school division, whether it be just school nurses, school nurses and administrators, possibly social workers, whomever we designate that we'd like to have trained. She will come in and train them. They will be certified, and then they provide the naloxone free of charge.
That's what I was going to, that was going to be my question.
It is free of charge. And she said when, you know, if it has to be used, then we just call and let them know and they'll bring us more.
Awesome. Okay. All right.
Any questions regarding? And the regulations for this actually outline the, as far as storage administration and training for the naloxone. I've worked with Kathy Hatter at Virginia Department of Health. She's the local health emergency coordinator. And she stated at any time if we have, if anybody has any questions, she's happy to come and answer them as well. Thank you very much.
I do have a couple of questions on JHD-R1.
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't see you pull that one up, so I wasn't sure.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's okay. No. Number 2A.
Yes.
The wording there sounds a little rough. The encourage to cooperate. Maybe we rephrase it as parents and guardians are encouraged to develop a schedule with the child's physician so that the necessity for taking medication treatment at school will be minimized or eliminated.
Okay.
So.
Sure. We're happy to take a look at that.
And then that would be number 4. Letter B and also letter F, adding in, in some regards, and signed off by a parent or guardian for B, and then maybe F and notifying the parent or guardian after the health facilitation. So after the first sentence, basically, add in parents. So B would be the school nurse or designee will administer all medication treatment as ordered by the physician and signed off by the parent or guardian and will document date and time.
Well, the, actually, that B is talking about that each day in school. They will give the medication and we keep a log of date and time. Under, I believe it's a little before that, in the regulation, the responsibility of the physician, there should be, it should indicate, the parent has to sign the form. Under A.
Okay. I didn't realize that was just specifically at during school. Because it didn't say that. That's, okay. All right.
And we can make that a little clearer as well.
Okay. Yes. That'd be helpful. Thank you.
But yes, they can, we don't give medications to any student without that form signed by the parent and filled out by the physician.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I will make those corrections.
I have them written down if you want them.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our thank you, Ms. Ailer. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, Mr. Arnold is going to come forward and speak about a capital improvement project that we are hoping to get underway for a partial roof replacement, Unionville Elementary School. And then he will stay to provide an update on other projects.
Thank you, Dr. Hornick. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. First of all, the roof over the cafeteria, gymnasium, kitchen, and offices at Unionville Elementary were placed in 2011. However, the roofs over the classrooms and hallways have not been replaced since 1997 and have recently experienced pounding, separation, seam failures, and leaks. Nine bids were received by the deadline on December 16th, 2022. And the lowest bid that came in was disqualified. So the administration recommends approval of the next lowest bid, which is from Willsey Roofing of Fredericksburg, Virginia, in the amount of $534,722. Willsey has previously installed a metal roof at the Field House in 2016, as well as several other roof projects similar to the Unionville project. This project is being funded via a portion of the state construction grant that was awarded in 2022. And we request approval of the board of this contract. Any questions or comments from the board?
Is this a metal roof that we?
No, this is rubber. It'll be similar to, this will be an EPDM rubber roof, similar to what's on there now, except it'll be a heavier mil, 90 mil instead of 60. I would also add that the roofs that were previously done in 2011 are also good candidates for the silicone roof coating that was used at the other flat roof schools when we put the solar panels on. So if we do that, we'll have an entire school that'll be good for the next 25-plus years.
I have a question. What type of warranty comes with that?
I believe it is 25 years.
Okay.
Would you entertain a motion to approve this?
Sure.
I'll make that motion that we approve the installation and replacement of the UES roof.
Can I have a second? A second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Doug, can you catch us up on the other projects going on, please?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hornick. Starting out with Gordon Barber Elementary School. The addition and renovations are continuing and making a lot of progress down there. Installed metal studs, door frames, exterior seating, and the electrical and plumbing rough-in are ongoing, and the duct work. Structural steel and the metal decking have been completed at the connection to the existing building. I believe Laura has some slides of the work up there if we can take a look. We'll start out with the interior. As you can see, most of the duct work has been installed and all the metal stud framing. This is the addition viewed from the West Baker Street side. And the Wright Street side, as you can see, the exterior ceiling has been installed, is ready for brick. Last but not least, this was the cause of the water shutdown for about half a day at Gordon Barber when the piece of equipment there was attempting to bring some materials up to the building and picked the, probably the softest place on the whole site where the water line happened to be. So that's been fixed, but that was a little bit of a snafu there. Okay. All right. Also at Gordon Barber, we have completed the masonry work to install a walk-in refrigerator for food service. It's in an existing storage space outside the kitchen, but under roof. And it makes an ideal place for a small walk-in freezer. And we're working with Mrs. Blair on that. Moving on to Orange Elementary, the equipment has been ordered for the HVAC replacement to take place this summer. That will be in all of the classrooms, hallways, and the gymnasium. One thing we're having to do, which we'll do during spring break, is we need to cut another hole in the cinder block wall up on the mezzanine above the gymnasium because there are four units in there and one is by an existing door. And then there are two units that serve the cafeteria and those will remain. And then we have to take the fourth unit out. So we have to create a space to do that. Moving on to Locust Grove Elementary, we had a very large water leak over the Christmas break after that hard freeze that took place in late December. And so we have now torn up all of the hardwood floor and stepped under the bleachers. And we're working with contractors to get pricing and get it approved by the insurance company so we can rebuild that floor. We also had a spiral slide on the playground that broke, had a fairly large hole in it. Unfortunately, we were unable to get that particular slide, so we instead replaced it with a straight slide rather than leaving it out. And also at Unionville, I explained to you last time about some of the asbestos abatement and radiator removals we did. But after that was complete, we replaced the carpet in the music room with the same carpet tile we have in the library. Kind of brings a school together. Okay. That's all I have for now. Any questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for the update, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Honnicker to come forward. And we have two supplemental appropriations to review with you this evening.
Good afternoon. I'm here to ask for two supplemental appropriations. And one of them, I need to change the amount.
And we can do that.
So the supplemental appropriation for the supply chain fund needs to be $40,599.04. The amount up there was the supply chain from the previous. We've gotten, this is a third payment. That was the second payment. So I need to update that to $40,599.04. The other is a pandemic relief bonus payment, and that amount is from federal government. It is $501,681.30. And I have attached the documentation for that. Does anyone have any questions for me? Okay, with no questions. You say you could change that for me, Laura?
Yes, I'll change it right after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Does this, does this have an expiration to this? Gary, that emergency money from the pandemic, does that have an expiration date? Does it have to be used by?
Yes, we have made that payment to the bonus, yes.
At this time, Dr. Honnicker, if you come forward, and we're going to provide the board and the community an update on the new website, which has taken longer than we had anticipated.
Good evening. Laura Byram and I have been working together on this year's change to our school district website and all of the school website pages as well. So we're just going to give you a little sneak peek, sneak peek, sorry, of what, some of the changes that you'll see. We're very excited because this will be a very streamlined approach to our school website. So when parents go to the main page and then go to a school page, no matter where their children are in school, they'll have very similar menus. It'll be very easy to use, and they'll be able to find the information that they need. It'll also provide us with the ability to get messages out much more quickly. And it'll have the things that pop up. and it'll have the things that pop up when you open, if it's an emergency. And so, we're very excited, like you can see here, Laura's showing you the example of when there's something upcoming. But we didn't want to show you the main part yet because that's kind of a surprise. So, just kidding. But we have been training everyone in the division. Each school has appointed. In addition to their principal, they have appointed a webmaster for their, for their building, so all of those people have been going through the training, as well as our TTRTs, all the directors here at the division office, as well as some other people who work in those departments, so that more than just one person can put something on the, you know, site, but, but it's still controlled and will hopefully look, look much nicer, as well as be easier to communicate in a more timely fashion. Any questions? I'm sorry, I should have told you, our, our launch date is at the end of March, so it will be finished by the end of March. Hopefully, maybe before, but by the end of March. We are, we are holding trainings, in-person trainings this week.
Yes, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday.
Yeah. Any questions? Alright, great, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Renee, and at this point, I'll have Gary come back up. And we're going to return to the task at hand and, and discuss the proposed budget and bring, now bring forward to you all of our funds. And so, Laura, if you want to go ahead and go to the next slide, we'll, we'll start with a recap of our budget priorities within the operating budget. And this is all information that you have seen. We have talked about at this point, we are pursuing a 5% increase for all full-time employees, and we are looking to gain on our regional competitors by providing our teachers with a, a step increase plus a 7% pay raise. We built a new instructional assistant pay scale. And if you remember, in addition to the change in salary and bringing that up, we also are gonna, seeking to have our IAs work 185 days as opposed to 184 to match with our comparison divisions, as well as move them from a seven to a seven-and-a-half-hour workday. And I think the starting salary is at the one that went to 15?
$15.
Starting, okay. Adjustment to our bus driver's pay scale, moving from a current starting salary of $18.50 to $20 an hour. New scale for our speech pathologists. Gary, could you detail that one? I believe it's 7% above a teacher plus a master's.
That is correct, 7%.
Okay. We, our new mechanics pay scale, again, to, to bring us more in line with our neighboring divisions. Gary did some work looking at what similar employees with similar training and expertise are paid in our neighboring divisions. A 1% retention bonus for all full-time employees. An adjusted pay scale for the school bookkeepers, and this would be at the elementary and middle school level, as we have already worked to address the high school position, as we have hired a new person this year. Other priorities that you have heard before is absorbing the costs of insurance and not passing those along to employees. New pay scale for custodians. I believe, Gary, that's to $14 an hour as a starting salary. And then the positions that you have heard before, we are prioritizing assistant principal for our Locust Grove Elementary and Primary Site. A technology and testing, as well as an instructional coach that we can have at Unionville Elementary School. Currently, one is shared between Lightfoot and Unionville. A school nurse manager, again, if you remember, this is, we would like to, this would be an RN, and we would like to base this person at the high school. It is very difficult for one nurse to address the needs of all 1,500 students in the building, and so this would provide a second set of hands, a second set of expertise. And also, when necessary, and if necessary, it gives us the flexibility to send a nurse to a building where one may be out, so we limit the number of times that we have a building, we were struggling to staff it with a nurse. Technology support specialist. We currently have this position. It is funded via ESER funding, and we would like to bring this into our local budget as we see the need and the ever-growing need of technology moving forward, requiring us to maintain this position. Two additional teachers at Locust Grove Middle School to maintain our SOQ levels and to ensure that we have the appropriate staffing there as that end of the county continues to grow. And we have also spoken to you, this is something that we would, we were, we will do out of our federal funds, but creating a teacher-mentor position as we have, and we hire more and more folks who are coming with less and less traditional training and, and clinical experience and student teaching experience. The level of support that we have to deliver has changed dramatically, and this will, this position will certainly help our principals and our other administrators be able to support our new folks as the level of support based on their reality changes. You have also seen this document and, well, this slide and this image and one like it before. This is the proposed budget based on the current year's budget and the percentage of each funding source. And again, this information is still currently based on Governor Youngkin's budget rollout on December 16th, and based on an average daily membership of a little over 4,760 students. In the last two presentations, you have also seen this document. This is how the percentage of our expenditures in the current year, as, as well as what we are proposing. And the far-right column details the percentage that each of these various codes accounts for in our budget. And now, we will get to portions of the other parts and other funds of our budget, as you have seen, the operating funds. So, this, this will be some of the other sides within food service, and I know Mr. Honnecker can speak to this more. Due to our participation in community eligibility, we have some additional funding. Gary, if you want to talk a little bit about what that means for our food service?
There is a significant increase in the amount from last year to this year that we are putting into this budget. And it's the community eligibility participation is providing more federal funds. And in addition to that, we have been a little bit, probably a little bit conservative in this fund in the fact that we have a fund balance, which means money that we can carry over from year to year. And the state only allows us a certain amount of that, so we've gotten a little bit more conservative with this, this fund. And one thing we have done is increased our cafeteria pay. We're going to have a starting pay at $14 an hour, which is up from 12. So, that, that in addition to the food cost, because we are having the community eligibility, which means we are giving free breakfast and lunch to everyone but the high school. They did not fit into that eligibility, but that's caused the increase in food cost, and we're also increased putting it into salary. So, again, but I feel, I feel good about the, the numbers we've, we've put into this budget, so.
And then with respect to Head Start, again, we know what the revenues are going to be. We are currently trying to figure out as far as all the other measures with respect to staffing and pay raises, et cetera. We are still working to determine those, but we know what our revenues will be, and obviously, then, we know that our expenditures will have to match said revenue. Anything else you need to add there, Gary?
No, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Again, these are funds that you have seen in previous budget presentations over the years, but not since I have been here. So, each year, there is a transfer for textbook funds. And you can see where the description of the revenue and where we are proposing to expend said revenue. Anything to add there, Gary?
No.
And similar with adult education. As in years past, the amount that the county provides for capital, to our capital budget to the tune of $567,000. And then our portion, essentially what we are putting in out of operating, to get the total revenue of $778,666. And I know, Gary, you'll want to talk a little bit about the debt service, particularly with performance contracts three, and what that means.
As you'll notice there, the 400 and, let me get that number up.
3,000.
403,680. That is performance contract number three. And I believe it was in the December board meeting, we discussed this performance contract. We presented the information to the county. The county is yet to make a decision on this, whether they're going to do this or not. But with discussions with my counterpart at the, at the county, she suggested we put it in the budget at this point, so that it can be discussed, and whether we move forward or not, it is in, it is in the budget presentation. And then, again, the only other item on there that's new is our FY21 bus purchase runs out, and the FY24 bus purchase goes in. So, everything else, I think, is normal stuff in there.
And so, for the performance contract, just to refresh the board, that was the December 19th work session when ABM, when Mr. Arnold had ABM on hand to, to discuss the performance contract, inclusive of the, the proposal that they have to include the Gordon Barber HVAC and removing the two-pipe system and replacing that with a variable refrigerant system. And you also notice in the bus purchase, with the 21 expiring and the 24 coming onboard, and then notice the price difference, the price of buses is going up.
And these have AC.
And they have AC already on them.
Yes.
And mapping, right?
That's right. Okay, this provides a breakdown of the proposed budget and all funds, and where they are coming from as far as total, from the state, from the federal, from the county, from local, as well as our proposed expenditures for next year. Anything you want to highlight here, Gary? I think we wanted to talk about capital fund 2321 at the top, which is about the fourth row down. That 2.512 million, that is the construction funding that Mr. Arnold was just referring to when we discussed the Unionville roof replacement. This was the additional state funding that was infused last year for us to address capital projects. And there is no provision that we have heard of to this point of any additional funding, so that's why there is zero in that column for FY24. Is there anything else in there, Gary, that we discussed?
You covered it well.
Okay. Okay, and so, if you've been keeping up basically with the news, and we know there are still a lot of things in the air, so to speak, with where ultimately, the General Assembly and the governor, and basically, the state of Virginia will fall with respect to how much funding schools will get in FY24. We have provided these few charts to kind of show a little bit of the difference. And so, when you look at state funding, and in this document, of course, the basic aid is the most comprehensive, the one that sticks out the most. You can see a little bit of where the three entities currently differ. And you see where the governors, so the governor's proposed budget of December 16th, 15, 4, 25, 100. And then, more recently, what the House unveiled, and what the Senate unveiled. And so, on the bottom right column, essentially, when we're, we're trying to navigate and figure out where the amount of funding might fall, the House and the Senate, for Orange County alone, are over $1.1 million apart, as far as where they have proposed their basic aid funding for the upcoming school year. And so, just to provide a little bit of clarity, so when we are working here, we have to utilize a best guess scenario. And so, I believe we have utilized what the governor proposed in his budget, from which to build our proposal. Correct, Gary?
This budget is built off of the governor's budget, because we, again, quite a difference in the two. The General Assembly will be the final thing, but whenever, we don't know exactly when that's going to happen, so.
Go ahead and go to the next one, Laura. Same type of information presented here, based on categorical programs, as well as incentive programs. And again, you see as far as differences between the governor, the House, and the Senate proposed budgets. And so, Laura, if you could go to the last one.
One thing to note on that is the House and the Senate have both included a 7% increase, where the governor had a 5% increase, so that's the reason you see quite a difference in the compensation supplement line.
Thank you, Gary. And so, finally, we bring this forward to you, so you can take a look at the bottom right number. When you account for all of these various sources of funding, the House and the Senate are over $2.1 million apart, and again, that is for Orange County. They are over $58 million apart Commonwealth-wide with respect to school funding. And so, this is where it, you've heard this from other divisions and other superintendents and other boards, that it makes the job of trying to build a budget difficult, because we are still working with a host of unknowns. We are hoping that this doesn't look like last year, because I believe the final budget was approved in June.
That's what it's looking like, that's what the word is.
The, this is the second year of the Biennium, so the General Assembly had a short session this year. And so, they have proposed essentially this skinny budget, and with details that will be basically quote-unquote "rolled out later this spring." So, I'm hoping this spring is more like March and April, not June. But what we have tried to do is build a responsible budget and, and hoping that we will see an increase in funding from the state level, which will then thereby reduce our ask to the local county.
And/or increase the percentage that we can give our employees.
So, we will stop there to see if you all have any more questions, as we, I believe this evening, we have, we are seeking approval of this budget request.
Just an observation. Appreciate you taking the time to break those categories down between where everybody lays and, and the budget process, and it's, it's realistic. Thanks for the information.
On the, I don't have the slides in front of me, but towards the beginning, I believe, was the first slide, where it listed academics and... Yeah, the, you passed it.
One more, oh, sorry.
One more after that. Is there any way that we can get more of a, a breakdown of what each of these entail?
I think there was a more, there was a larger breakdown in the last budget presentation that we did.
In the last one? Okay.
Correct, yes.
Can you grab that tomorrow? I'll just send it out, Gary.
Absolutely.
So, that's no problem. We will, I'll send that out to you all.
Thank you.
That way, you don't have to search for it from the last presentation.
Okay, this is an action item tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
I have one, one question. Could we get some of this online?
Yes, sir. We will post it as soon, we want to post it right after the presentation, in case we are making changes.
And as a caveat to know as well, approval tonight, I think, is strong language to our community. We are on the same page with respect to the priorities that we hold. There are going to be changes to this, because we don't have... There are going to be changes to this because we don't have solid numbers. So anything that has to change, we, of course, will bring back to you and explain where it's coming from. And obviously, one of the biggest ones is we're kind of still in limbo as opposed to where the state will actually fall with respect to the percentage increase for pay. And we have also spent a lot of time with the community members and other folks explaining what that actually means as far as, you know, if the state is proposing a 7% increase for SOQ, Instruction and Support, positions. What that means is due to our local composite index, that means that the state of Virginia is going to provide us with 58% of that, the cost to do the 7% raise for about 80% of our employees. Okay, so that means that the local funding agency is on the hook for the remaining 41.15% of those SOQ positions as well as 100% of any position that is not dedicated SOQ. And so that's where we've been just trying to build folks' capacity and understanding and knowledge of how state funding for schools works. And it's not quite as simple as to say the state is giving us money for 7% raises for teachers. It's not exactly how it works. So there will definitely be changes to this. There was a pretty big dichotomy between the House and the Senate with respect to the retention bonus. I believe the House didn't include it at all.
The House didn't include it at all. And the Senate, I think it was 400 and some thousand versus 175 that the governor added. That's the next one.
Scroll to the next one, Laura.
Next one, I think.
Right there, we see with the bonus payment. Okay, so the House does not have that included at all in their budget proposal. The governor had a 1% retention bonus for certain designated positions. And this is the funding that, to help cover that. And you see what the Senate brought forward as far as a bonus. So there's still a lot of details to be navigated and worked out.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept this.
Ms. Anderson had to step out.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. I apologize.
I think it's good that the board votes on it just for what the superintendent said. To show that the board and superintendent are walking the same talk. My position is I think we should improve it as a draft budget or something like that because we know that it's not fun at all.
He's got proposed.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Proposed is acceptable.
And this is also the superintendent's budget, so it wouldn't be the final school budget as well. Proposed superintendent's budget, yes.
Right. Well, once we approve this, that means we've put our stamp on it. Then it's a school board's proposed budget.
And yes, and then we move it to the county to...
And again, we'll keep you all well informed about any and all changes that are absolutely going to come as we move through this process.
So at this time, I would entertain a motion?
I make a motion we approve the proposed budget for year, fiscal year 2024 as presented.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam chair, members of the board. And at this time, I'm going to invite Dr. Anderson to come forward. We are really excited to provide the board an update of where we are with respect to strategic planning. And I would like to re-echo again my great appreciation for your ongoing support with this process. And so essentially, what we wanted to do was to catch the school board members up as well as the community at large as far as where we stand now after doing the initial summit on January the 19th as well as our three days of work here in February. And Dr. Anderson is our internal facilitator and point of contact. And so we're looking forward to providing this update to you. So if you could go forward, Laura. And so this picture was taken at the end of the day on day three. And we were all still smiling, which is really good. And I will start by just expressing my gratitude to Mr. Jones and Mrs. Anderson for their time and coming forward. And they also met with Judy and myself the week prior to take a look at our list of folks. And it was really important to us that we did everything within our power to gather a team that reflects the diversity, particularly diversity in thought as well with this community. And so this is the picture of the strategic planning team. And we appreciate each one of them. And I think we wanted to, we have some in attendance this evening.
We do. We'd really like to take an opportunity just to thank everyone who was involved. It was an amazing group of folks with various backgrounds and perspectives on the school system. So I'd like to ask each of them to stand if they would just so that we can say thank you for your participation. There were 30 team members. The team included students, parents, staff, and community members.
And so how we're going to break this down is we're going to spend a little time giving a brief overview of what we did on the particular days and what some of the outcomes were. And so day one was heavy on working with team members with respect to purpose. Not only the purpose of each of them being there and what they wanted to see, but also what they saw as the purpose of, and the role of education in Orange County. And we spent a lot of time working on the aspirations that we have for students and for this community and for this school system as well as working and building a set of beliefs. I will note that, as promised, this work was done and in a collaborative effort. And everything was voted on by members of the group to have full agreement. So it was not based on consensus. It was based on agreement from the folks in the room. Also on day one, we began the process of crafting a mission statement. And then we ended up having an ad hoc group. We broke up into five or six groups. Each group was working on draft mission statements. And we presented them, they were presented to the entire group. And then a volunteer group of ad hoc members met and brought all of the major themes that were in each of the five or six draft mission statements and brought a one consolidated draft mission statement back for the team to review. And we ended up finalizing that on day two. So we will speak about that in just a moment. But I know Judy can walk you through a little bit of some of the outcomes on day one.
Thank you. Yes, so each day we had five groups that worked together, and those groups changed day to day. So next, we're going to show you the list of beliefs that we ended our time together on. It was a challenge to work through all of the, it was a very broad list. And then to be able to consolidate those into what we consider to be our core beliefs. So these are, would be the beliefs or the convictions that anchor our work as a school system. So you can see that it's everything from how we interact with one another, that we partner with one another, to how we respect one another and involve everyone in the community and having a voice in the future of the school system.
And then as we roll through day two, again, we solidified our mission, which we will show you the draft. Everything here, of course, is in a draft form until we bring the final document back to you. Day two was also very, very heavy with respect to learning about the school system. And so to the other, our other three board members, you were provided with the same binder that our 30 members of the strategic planning team was provided with on the three days. And so we provided a lot of information to all of the members. We also had members of the cabinet come in and do rotations. As you can see, for instance, in the picture, on the left-hand side, that is Marshall and Justin and Mr. Berry doing their rotation on facilities, maintenance, transportation, kind of some of the nuts and bolts, the logistics part. And so we had members of the cabinet who spoke to the five major topics that were included inside the vital signs binder. Day two was also the students' heaviest lift. The facilitators had spoken with them the day before and worked with them and got them prepped to answer a series of questions so that in addition to the vital signs document, in addition to the rotations and the information that the team members learned from that, they were also able to hear directly from students as far as their perspectives on things that are going well, what makes Orange County great, what was their greatest learning experience, as well as if they had one thing that they could move forward and address and improve, what would that be? We also provided the members, as well as the members of the board, with the community input, the feedback that we received via our stakeholder survey that we sent out. And the remaining part of the day was for the team members to take all this information in. And we were certainly drinking from a fire hose, for sure. But to begin to identify strengths and challenges that we are going to face. Challenges not only internal, but also external challenges as well. And so I'll let you go from here, Judy.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go forward, Laura.
So the development of a mission was one of the primary outcomes of our time together. And this is a very aspirational statement that speaks to who we are as a school division, who we aspire to be, what our purpose is for our students, and then how we will reach that goal. So you can see a lot of very aspirational language in this, as it should be, because we're talking about the education that we want to provide to our students and how we want to engage our community and our staff in doing so.
Also on day two, we began the work of establishing some parameters. And we finalized those. And it was a similar process to the mission insofar as five groups got together and started to develop their own kind of set of parameters. And those were then brought back, presented to the whole group, and then volunteers served on an ad hoc group to try to parse down and bring together ones that had similar themes to get one unified list of parameters. And then we also broke off into teams and began to work on some draft objectives and some draft strategies with, which is essentially the ultimate goal is to get, is to use this information as a frame and a starting point so that the action teams, which Judy will talk to you about also in a few moments, have a starting point and are in line with the sentiment and the thoughts and the information brought forward by the strategic planning team.
So essentially, the parameters are the boundaries that we impose upon ourselves as a team and as a school division. So these are the agreements that we have to work within when we're making our decisions and as we're developing our plan.
Go ahead, Laura. Ultimately, the outcome of the work that the strategic planning team did led to five key focus areas. And it will be from these focus areas that the action teams will be working. And so the focus areas, instructional programming, safe learning environment, teacher recruitment and retention, parent and community partnerships, as well as technology.
This is our first area, instructional programming. And this is our objective for what we would hope to accomplish for our students, ensuring that all students graduate with the education and essential skills needed to realize their greatest potential. And then these are some of the strategies that the team developed in order to reach that goal. So action teams would work with those strategies to develop action teams, potentially revising some as the team may work together and propose that back to the planning team.
So within the safe learning environment, ensuring all students benefit from a safe environment, learning environment that promotes physical, mental, emotional, and social well-being. And some of the, some of the ideas and strategies that the group came up with as far as creating a clear structure of communication, developing and following with fidelity, a set of behavior expectations, social, emotional skills identified, taught, and met, and involving families in decisions regarding social and emotional health.
And the third area regarding community partnerships and partnerships with parents came through as a very top priority in terms of our work as a team as well as input from the community. So we want to ensure that all of our students benefit from a variety of community partnerships that support not only their education through our 12th grade, but also their career and what they may pursue outside of school. So this action team will be working on how to develop those partnerships in order to support our students.
Go ahead, Laura. Within the realm of high-quality staff members, of course, we want to make sure that our students are served by highly qualified and a diverse group of staff members that reflect our community. And they are supported and trained in student success and achievement. And of course, we want to make sure that we're recruiting and retaining the highest-quality staff members. And coming directly out of this group, they really want the action team to focus on ways to better engage veterans, retirees, and career sweatchers who can help fill our ranks and have a lot of capacity to help us move forward.
And the last area that's being addressed through the plan is technology and digital citizenship with a very heavy emphasis on helping our students understand how to use technology, not only for learning with, of course, the support of their teachers, but also how to use that responsibly. So not only in school, but throughout their lives. So this objective is to ensure that all students have access to technology that transforms the way we learn while they're also practicing how to use that technology ethically and responsibly. And so doing so, two of the strategies that we've suggested through the planning committee is embedding that digital citizenship and responsible use of technology in our curriculum daily. And then the selection of a curriculum to support that and making sure that there's adequate training around that. So again, the planning teams set the guide or the vision for the future of the school system. And now action teams will do the work of actually making that plan come to life. So we're currently accepting volunteers for the action teams. The link is available on the website. It's open to all members of the school community. And toward the end of this week, we'll be putting those teams together and confirming with everyone who has signed up. Our next big event will be next Tuesday evening, March 7th, at the Hornet Sports Center, and that will be the action team kickoff. Prior to that, action team leaders will be trained. And during the months of March and April, action teams will work together on a flexible schedule that they determine within their group. And then at the conclusion of those two months, action teams will bring back their strategies to the planning team for further review and finalization of a draft plan to present to the board for approval. In conclusion, I just want to say thank you again to the overwhelming support from the entire school community. There have been, there's been a lot of interest in the strategic plan. What's been most impressive is everyone with whom I've spoken, even unless they have schedule conflicts or something that presents, prevents them from being in a certain part of this process, has said, please place me wherever I'm needed to do the best work that I can for the school division. And I just couldn't be prouder to be part of Orange County in this effort as we move forward.
Do you have an update on how many volunteers have already responded saying they would assist in action teams?
Just under 60 the last time that I checked today.
Good.
What's a time commitment?
Roughly, based on projections from the consultants from other work, 25 to 30 hours of work that could be done individually in conjunction with working together as a team.
In other words, people that are working a nine-to-five job could actually take part?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And for these action teams, there's not going to be a duplicate? Like the people that were on the original, the 30 members are not eligible to be on the action teams? Actually, they can. They can sign up to be part of a team. We would just recommend that they not be a leader of a team because they're going to be on the planning team again, and they'll be presented back to the planning team. So they could be a part of the team, but not a leader of the team. So they could be a part of the team, but not a leader of the team.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Madam Chair, members of the board, that is all this evening for reports and recommendations, and I thank you for your time.
Very welcome. At this time, it is for a presentation of a policy revision by a board member, and so I will turn it over to Mr. Hopkins.
Well, I've submitted an addition to policy IGBC, and it's been on the website. It's right at the top of the second page. So, well, let's find out if we've got any action item here. I don't know how to handle this, because if I make a motion, then we end up doing it tonight. Maybe we just want to talk about it tonight and do it next week. It's up to you, Madam Chairman.
That's fine with me.
That's what I understand.
So we'll just open it for discussion?
I think that's, I think the fairest way to go. So, well, let me just say why I did this. The American Psychiatric Association calls what is described in the first bullet of the draft as gender dysphoria. The psychiatric association said is the stress that results from the incongruence between one's sex assigned at birth and one's gender identity. The draft policy before us is saying only one thing: If a child is experiencing the symptoms of what might be diagnosed as gender dysphoria, it is the school's responsibility to inform at least one parent.
Well, it goes without saying that it's going to stir some debate, which it should, and they'll obviously agree that we should wait till our next meeting, so public comment can be digested, and obviously email correspondence. But I do see the positive fruit of obviously having a parent involved or a guardian that's no child should be left to go alone, to, you know, go through any kind of process without guidance. So the language that you have in there, I'm inclined to support what it says.
It's also my understanding that this is what we already do as far as regulation, so I think it's important that we have something in policy, so that way there's a standard and a formal procedure to go through. I did want to add an additional bullet point to it. I don't know if this would be better left for next meeting, but just my general thoughts. I don't want the principals to be held solely accountable for what goes on if they're not aware in certain areas of their schools. And so a final bullet point I would like to see added to this, if we are to continue with discussion, would be something along the lines of this policy precludes any staff member from participating in an informal or preliminary plan to treat or affirm gender incongruence. So it just ensures that there's no staff member that's going to go and start a treatment plan to effect without having the school onboard in addition to at least one parent or guardian.
I would say that would have to be as an amendment when we get the motion on the table. It's not appropriate to do it now. I'm not willing to just accept that and add it to my part.
Do we have any evidence that teachers go outside of the administration's direction on anything? I'm not aware of any evidence that exists.
Well, in my 30 years of teaching and looking at the Code of Virginia, the power in the school was really all vested in the principal. That just goes back to 50 and 60 years of school law. So that's why I placed the responsibility on the principal. The principal is actually responsible for the instruction that goes on in every classroom. And in theory, that's what the principal's supposed to do, is principal's supposed to be around seeing what's going on in every classroom. Now, we know the principals have a lot more responsibility to do other things than that, but if you actually read the code and what it's supposed to, the principals are in charge of the school. And that's the reason I wrote it that way. Now, you notice it says the principal or his designee. His designee is probably going to be the teacher. I will give you a perfect example. I send stu-, I'm a teacher. I send this student down to the office because he has a discipline problem. Okay? He comes back with a note, and he's back in class, and then I send him down again. Well, you know what's going to happen? That vice principal, which he probably is where it went, is going to call me in. And he's going, you sent this student down here two or three times for a discipline. Did you call his parents? And if I said no, I can tell you what that vice principal's going to say to me. You didn't do your due diligence. The next time you contact the parent, then if it doesn't work out, you send them to me. So that's just how it works in a school system.
Well, I think I can support it the way it is. I can't support adding the second language to it.
I don't understand, I mean, this isn't really for debate, because we didn't put it on the table or anything, but it's just my question at the next meeting would be why there would be an issue with adding a statement that says you cannot have an informal plan without involving the school. So that's just, with policy, it needs to be black and white. There shouldn't be any gray area, and so that would remove a possibility of gray area.
Well, I think it's spelled out in what it says right there.
Yeah.
And what Mr. Hopkins just mentioned, that designee, in his example, was pretty good laid out. And again, I don't know that there's any evidence that exists that shows that a teacher, and I know I'm speaking from a biased point, but I'm nowhere of a teacher that would go out and directly disobey their administrator.
No, I'm not.
If there's evidence, I'd like to see it.
I'm not suggesting that, but I'd rather be proactive than reactive, you know?
I like to be based on timely and accurate assessments rather than chasing ghosts. That's all I've got to say. If there's evidence that exists that that's occurring, then I would entertain seeing that evidence.
Sure.
But I support the way it is, but I will wait to, I would suggest, Madam Chair, that we wait to our next meeting to decide this, if that's okay.
Awesome. Fine with me.
Yep.
What is the will of the board?
I think that's fine. I think the public should see it. The public should have a time to come in and talk about this. I really actually believe it cuts across, well, I just read, I just read the court filing. It's in Circuit Court now, Court of Appeals down in Richmond. It's basically a case Montgomery County, that's not Montgomery County, Virginia, it's Montgomery County, Maryland, and two parents are arguing about parents' rights to be notified. I read the briefs on both sides, and both sides agree that the most important part is get the parents involved. So that's all I'm saying in my motion here. I don't know how people in the audience here are people going to stand, but I mean, the people that are arguing in court both say emphatically that the parents need to be involved. And so the issue is whether a school can, the issue between them, what are they fighting about then? What they're fighting about is whether the school board has the authority to withhold information. And I don't care whether it's test scores or anything else, I will not stand in my personal position for holding any information back from the parents.
So Mrs. Byron, can we go ahead to board calendar reviews, please?
Sure. Okay. So we have, actually, coming up this week on Wednesday night, we have Mr. Hopkins, Ms. Page, and Dr. Hornick attending the VSBA Region Forum, Central Region Forum, and this is the one, if you recall, where we take our artwork. And we have three great submissions for you to take with you. And then we have our board meeting on the 6th. We have an Orange County Education Foundation Board meeting on the 23rd, prep board meeting on the 24th, and work session on the 27th. And then moving on to April, we have spring break the first week, so our meeting is bumped to the 10th of April, and then the work session's on the 24th.
All right. And so I think that concludes this. So with that, we'll go over next meeting.
Yes, I will remove the field trip and the resolution, and we will just have, and the partial roof replacement. And then we'll have, I guess I can take off the preliminary budget information update, too. So, and I think I need to take off the governor's school board report, because I think you won't have one before that meeting.
You can also, I think, the supplemental appropriations were approved this evening.
Oh, we have an evaluation, but I don't think we-
For Blue Ridge School?
It's on the-
Do you want to give that report, Mr. Hopkins, at the next meeting?
Oh, you were talking about our next meeting.
The Blue Ridge School?
Yes, sir.
Where you have a-
Okay, I think I already sent something to you.
Yeah, I think we don't, I think that one needs to come off. I think we, when we talked, you won't have a board, a governor's school meeting.
Correct. I mean, I've had one, haven't I give a report on that?
Yes, I think we're saying that you won't have another one before then.
Correct. I think that's correct also.
All right. Okay.
It better be if the chairman doesn't know it's a meeting. We're getting in trouble.
All right. And with that, can we have closed session certification, please?
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as Authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment, and Retirement of Employees.
All right, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're in closed session.
Julie, don't let it go.
Yeah, it's come down. I'm not afraid to drink anything. At the same time, I need to...
Maybe we should turn off the air.
Okay.
I watch batteries, did it?
Is something bugged in? Got you guys?
No, I just got really lightheaded and then I got nauseous all of a sudden.
Here, Chelsea. I want to, uh...
It's not that.
Take your fluids.
It's not that.
You can just say that that comes with you.
We've had this for three weeks.
Okay.
All right, are we ready to call this meeting back to order?
Yes ma'am.
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Page.
Aye.
Mrs. Quinter.
Aye.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the vote as follows, five yes votes and no no votes. The resolution was approved by a five to zero vote.
Thank you. Um, disposition of personnel actions, Dr. Hornet, does this come with your recommendation?
Yes ma'am, recommend approval of the personnel agenda presented in closed session and the addendum including retirement, resignation, salary adjustment, employment, transfer, termination, and coaching appointments.
Thank you, can I have a motion please?
I move to accept the recommended approval of the personnel agenda and addendum to include retirement, resignation, salary adjustment, employment, transfer, and termination and coaching appointments.
Okay, thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, motion passes. Um, at this time if there is no other business, uh, we'll adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
You're welcome.